Okay, it's, don't slide it up. Okay, this is the April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Select Board meeting, starting at six thirty-six. This is a fully remote meeting. The Zoom is on the actual agenda. Please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast live via Zoom. It is also recorded for playback video on demand viewing at H W K M dot org. Please note that other than call to order, all times your estimated items may be taken out of order. So, call to order. Public input. Purpose for a public comment on matters falling within the jurisdiction of the Select Board and not on the current agenda. Note, public comment on specific agenda items where the public comment period will be deferred until those items are reached. Rules, two minutes per person. A person may speak once, ten minutes total. All participants wishing to the address board, the Select Board, during public comment may do so in person or via Zoom by virtually raising their hand. Speakers must identify themselves by name and street address. The Select Board may not deliberate or vote on matters discussed during public comment but are not on the agenda. So let's go to reports and announcements, please.
Thank you, Peter.
Is there any public comments?
Oh, public comment.
Steve, I don't know if you want to have the board just like a roll call attendance as well.
Yeah.
Okay, Peter Clay is here.
Deirdre Parata here.
Ben Simon here.
Karen Agar here.
Alright, so let's take a moment. If anybody in the public has a public comment, we're allowing open public comment for ten minutes, two minutes per person, just please.
Can folks raise their hand in the public if there is a question to be asked, please? Let's see. There are no hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Reports and announcements. Let's start with the town administrators' update and town announcements, please.
Alright, thank you, Peter. As you know, we had our town meeting last week. Just quickly, Natalie Bowers just put up her hand. I don't know if you want to entertain her public input.
Sure.
Go ahead, Natalie.
Thank you, Chair. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit confused with the agenda. Is this the time for public input? And when people should raise their hand to say a statement to the board?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Okay. My name's Natalie Bowers. Thank you for calling on me.
Your address?
Yes, sixteen Porter Street. I live here with my husband and two children. I have lived here for almost ten years and we moved here to raise our family and to be closer to our relatives. You know, and even then, finding a home within our relatively high affordability budget in this area was incredibly difficult due to the lack of housing. I am here to share my support for adopting swiftly the MBTA community zoning, known as three A, which will allow Wenham to encourage new multifamily homes in the town. Similar to so many other places, home prices have been on the rise in our town for some time. And diversifying housing options in our town, including small-town homes and two- and three-family homes could really alleviate stress on the housing market on the residents that are here right now. New homes will mean new options for seniors to downsize, opportunities for young couples and families to stay here, and affordable options for teachers who help raise our children and even police and firefighters who protect our communities. The lawsuit in Milton that we all watched and we took audience for has officially codified three A into a law that we must adopt. Our own town has a long history of evading the responsibilities asked by our Commonwealth to provide housing known as missing middle for families for too long. Three A was born specifically to stop us evading the family responsibility in forty B. I'm asking that we show strong support and we adopt this now. And I am hoping that the Select Board is spending their energies embracing this law. And I'd love an update when you get a chance. I support multifamily overlay districts. And thank you for the opportunity to comment.
We also have Sherri Tilly as well. Go ahead, Sherri.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. I apologize in advance because I'm fighting what I think is allergies, but maybe a cold, as I'm sure some of you are as well. But I'm Sherri Tilly. I live at one hundred Cedar Street with my family in Wenham, Massachusetts. I'll keep this brief. I just want to say, you know, the town demonstrated strong support for school consolidation at both the town meeting and polls recently. And given the importance of this matter, and particularly given the level of public interest, I just respectfully ask that the Select Board convene another special town meeting to vote again and keep school consolidation moving forward. Appreciate your time and effort, particularly in support of this project and all that you do for the town. So, thank you.
We'll have Kate Snyder as well. Go ahead, Kate.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. I'm Kate Rapucci Snyder at eight Morgan Street here in Wenham. And I just want to echo my support for Sherri Tilly. We would really love to see the support from the Select Board on helping our students get a new consolidated school. So that's it, and thank you all for your time.
Any other comments, questions? Please raise your hand for public comment. That is it.
Alright, that's all.
Yes.
Alright, great. Alright, so.
I think Joe is frozen. I'm not sure if he's talking. Oh, there's it. You're back.
So last week was our annual town meeting as well as our local election, which we will discuss in more detail later in this meeting. However, you know, we had a quickly, we shifted gears here at the staff level pretty quickly to start focusing and preparing for the special town meeting that is tentatively scheduled for June ninth. Originally intended for the proposal for the residents to vote three A, three A zoning. So we've been working on fiscal impact working group with that. The planning board's been busy working through the process, holding public hearings as well as a public hearing for Spring Hill, which was held last week. We'll be further discussed later on tonight. And as well as putting together a relatively long list of requests before the Select Board for inclusion on special town meeting. We have our special state primary that's only affecting precinct one on April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We have all the ballot information up on the website for folks that want to check it out. I just got an email this afternoon from the grant coordinator from the Green Communities Division, Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, that we have the green light on the five hundred K for the town hall. So that was good news. We did get an award letter a number of weeks ago. However, we had some paperwork and additional hoops to jump through before we finally got the green light to complete, to begin work on the project. So we just got that official word today. So that is really the final piece of the funding puzzle. And now we can get together with the contractors and put in place a working plan on how this, you know, how this project is going to unfold, where we are going to be occupying the building throughout the installation of the system. And it's going to require us to move around the building as the months go by into areas where construction is not being done. And then Kate also notified me that they have a free tree program hosted by Ipswich River Watershed Association. So that's going to be pick up a free tupelo tree seedling to celebrate Arbor Day Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, four to six P M, Wenham Town Hall, first floor. We'll be pushing this out on social media as well. And that is all I have for this evening.
I'm going to reserve my comments until we talk about the town meeting and the election, please.
Yeah, likewise.
Just one comment for me, and it pertains not to the past election, but just a reminder to those voters who live in precinct one in Wenham that there's a special election tomorrow to fill the state representative seat that was vacated by Judge Jerry Paracella. And for those who are listening and aren't sure whether they're in precinct one or not, it's roughly speaking in the eastern half of Wenham, the split occurring on one side of Main Street and on Porter Street and a few other streets near there, and then extending out towards east, towards Hamilton and Beverly. That's the part of Wenham that's precinct one in very rough terms. And so I hope everyone will exercise their democratic franchise and go out tomorrow to vote in the primary elections that are on the ballot for that seat.
Okay. Can we rock? So, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say my faith in humanity was restored this afternoon. Our Hamilton Wenham Girl Scouts have been doing a pledge for the both towns for the last three weeks regarding gathering items for the animal shelter, which effective this afternoon was stolen. The police have been notified and the police files and claims have been completed. But unfortunately, they were all stolen. But my faith in humanity has been resolved because our community has stepped up and will work very diligently in the next twenty-four, forty-eight hours to replenish that supply for the Girl Scouts. So I just want to say thank you to everybody who participated in that. Thank you to the police who were quick to help us out and just wanted to say thank you to everyone that participated in helping our girls really get back what they've worked so hard for. So thank you.
That's terrible.
Yeah, they stole it from my house. So it's pretty not so great. But the girls have been doing it for weeks. We've had flyers everywhere. It's completely unfortunate. So we're just assuming that some unfortunate family or family in an unfortunate situation took the took the items and hopefully they can use it in a way that will help their family. But I had hoped that maybe they wouldn't have stolen from the Girl Scouts.
Brutal.
So Kevin, thank you for your team. Your team has been great.
Glad to hear it.
Can we slide down so I can do the consent agenda, please? Oh, consent agenda, routine items of approval in a single motion, allowing them to be passed without discretion unless held, and we have none. New business items for individual consideration. These items will allow for public comment, ten minutes. Purpose, the comment period will allow for public comment on individual and will be held before or after the board's discussion of agenda items. Rules, two minutes per person. A person may speak only once, ten minutes total per item unless noted on the agenda item. Okay, you're all set, Steve.
Good. So I remember a number of months ago, the Select Board requested that the police review the speed limits throughout town in their appropriateness. And so what Kevin has done just that, he had, I'm going to share a memo that I think I shared with you through email last week. But that is drafted by Sergeant Marsh with some recommendations. And Chief Tenapoli is going to walk us through that.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. Dave Marsh did a nice job following up on this, and I say that with a heavy heart because we only have about three more weeks before he retires. And you'll hear me say it again. He's just been just a solid employee, a go-to officer in my tenure here. So this is just another example of him, you know, helping the cause. So he's certainly, certainly going to be, going to be missed. What he focused on is he ended up recommending ten modifications and/or changes. And in doing that, what I also did is I went back, I actually wanted it to be the the most recent review, if you will, and I went back a calendar year literally to today. And I was able to break it down in our records management system that allowed me to look at how many vehicles we stopped on literally every street in town. And so if any questions do come up or you'd like to know a specific street, I can tell you how many stops and then how many, how much money in fines, whether it was a warning or whether it was a specific to a money citation, if you will. And it ended up being in, on all streets, a year ending today, it was one thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine stops. So two, call it two thousand stops on the different, different streets. And so the officers should absolutely be commended for their officer-initiated activity going above and beyond to help keep things safer. In some of these recommendations made by Sergeant Marsh, I candidly think as I go through these, that in other municipalities, and I think what might make most sense here is to respectfully with the board's approval to bring them to one one mile-per-hour speed limit in the entire municipality. And I think that would be the cleanest, safest way to go about that, other than obviously the state road, which we're unable to do. But with that said, ahead of time, I will go through what Sergeant Marsh has recommended after his careful review. On each street, he, these were his top-ticket items that he noticed. Arbor Street from Juniper to Maine to bring that down to twenty due to the proximity to the Buca School. And then also to bring Porter and Bruce down to twenty in School Street. Twenty miles per hour currently, it's not posted, just to have that posted. So in any of these changes that we do end up going with that the board approves, obviously DPW's, we're going to need their assistance to help out with the signage because it will affect the signage changes. Topsfield Road, the existing thirty-five mile-per-hour zone should be changed to thirty, and thirty-mile-per-hour zone should be changed to twenty-five near the Cherry Street and Maple Street intersection. Cherry Street, the existing thirty-five mile-per-hour zone to thirty. And twenty zone, twenty-five zone remains unchanged. Latch Row, the existing thirty-five would be dropped down to thirty. And again, the twenty-five mile-per-hour zone would be unchanged. Grapevine, the existing thirty-five to thirty, twenty-five mile zone is unchanged. And then the seventy-six Grapevine Road from Gordon College to one twenty-eight, that should be twenty miles per hour. Hall Street, thirty down to twenty-five, and then Rubbley Road, thirty-five down to thirty. Those are Sergeant Marsh's recommendations. But like I said, you know, I personally think an easier way to go about it is to have the whole municipality down to twenty-five. And I think it would be easier for the public. It would be easier for the signage changes. It would be easier for the officers relative to enforcement. And I just think it's hard to find a negative. The clear signage on the main routes coming into town could say all roads, you know, in Wenham are twenty-five miles per hour. So every, all, you know, access points, the main access points into town would show that. And then through muscle memory and the folks that live in town and the people that travel through town on a regular basis would get used to that. And then with any changes, even if it's just these ten or if it's only a few, the way the officers usually go about these type of changes, whether it's a speed limit change or whether it's a different signage or a new stop sign, what have you. The officers, the best practice that we've always done and that I've done in my career is to use it as information at first, so people are aware and start off with warnings to give people the opportunity to get used to that. And then after, you know, a three- or six-month period of time, and the people should know by that point, then we start with more serious enforcement action.
Hey, Cabinet, they've got New Hampshire, Maine plates. You ought to nail them right away.
There you go. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'd also be happy that if you have a question about a specific street, I have the printout with me. I'd be happy to tell you how many motor vehicles we stopped on that street in the last calendar year.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. I really appreciate this. Even realizing that we have a speed problem, some of it was still surprising, the extent of it. I have a question about Topsfield Road, Route ninety-seven. Do we have the ability to change the speed there?
I believe we do. It's my understanding Main Street is the, one A is the only one we don't. And I would obviously have to check on that, just in Topsfield Road, since you brought it up, two hundred and twenty-five motor vehicle stops on Topsfield Road for speed in the last year. And these numbers initially would probably go up, but for the right reason, because the speeds are probably going to be high according to whatever the new speed limits are. So your initial reaction would be to see some of these stops go up. But then hopefully, over time, they would go down and certainly be safe, that's for sure.
Yeah, I'm definitely in favor of a town-wide speed limit. I think that would be great.
I'm supportive too.
As somebody who has witnessed the jaws of life right outside of our house on ninety-seven as well as a plethora of hundred mile-an-hour motorbikes and then one dirt bike that didn't make it over the hill not that long ago, I'm fully supportive of this. It's been something that we've been pushing for for quite some time as residents up here on the hill. So this is a no-brainer. And to answer your question, we actually own the entire route. It used to be owned by the state, but the state has given the rights back to multiple routes. And Rick Susan, I have had conversations about that. As far as DPW services goes, the state was able to get a grant to help pave the actual ninety-seven and the entire route. But all snow removal and those kind of things actually fall within Wenham itself. So I'm fully supportive of the twenty-five. Hey, Gary.
Good evening. Just a quick question, too. When we looked at Bruce Lane for that speed change, do we run into state or Mass DOT as far as reducing to twenty around the school that's not bounded by the actual school?
I, I will have to check on some of the particulars if there's any pushback that limits us. And I will certainly reach back as I, as we start to pursue it. I don't believe it would be, it would be an issue. I don't believe so, but I could certainly get a straight answer on you on that one, Gary.
Perkins is not on here. Is that just a matter of because it's already in school zone, so they're not talking about increasing or decreasing this, the amounts?
Yeah, that's probably why he left it off. And it's funny you say that when I was at the polls the other day. A gentleman that lives on Perkins did express concern as well. And he was, his major concern was midweek, actually wasn't in school hours, it was between four and six in the afternoon. So I did put that out to the entire department for more enforcement activity. But yeah, that's probably why he did not put that on there. It may frankly just have been missed. And we can, you know, it doesn't have to, we can always go lower in certain areas. I mean, certainly all roads other than school zones can be twenty-five and the schools can be twenty. We can, you know, do it like that if that, and that's, it wouldn't be that labor-intensive to, you know, make the school zones all twenty and every other road twenty-five. I think that's more than reasonable.
That sounds good to me.
Ben, Ben, were you waiting?
The chief answered the question I was going to ask, so.
Okay, I have to, I have to just ask, then where did Maple Street fall? I know there's a lot of concern here and on Burley Street, I've heard from residents there as well.
Well, let me see. Maple Street, seventy-one stops on Maple Street in the last year.
Okay.
So, yeah, quite a, quite a few. And a lot of this is, like I said, is a testament to the, you know, we have a lot of officers that are certainly passionate about getting out there and being active, and that's huge. And it's all, there is absolutely, in my career, I've seen the direct correlation between this officer-initiated activity and the ratio specific to not only accident reduction but crime reduction as well. And, and I think we, you know, the visibility footprint that the officers have done, I'm super, super proud of them. They're, they're, they're active. A big push, too, is during those heavy commuting hours in the morning and in the afternoon, that they're out there and visible because it does slow cars down. Just seeing a marked cruiser out there certainly makes a difference.
Joe, we have David Doggett on the line that has his hand up.
Mr. Chairman, is that okay to allow the speaker, David Doggett? I think you're muted, Peter.
Sorry. Deirdre, what do you think as vice chair?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
Thank you very much, David Doggett, five William Fairfield Drive. Appreciate you taking the time to listen to my comments here. So Chief, really appreciate all of the work you've done to keep this community very safe. As a resident of William Fairfield Drive, one concern I have with kind of allotted limits that you have here is our street is typically used as a cut-through. And if the speed limits around us are lowered, but our street is not, you know, we could end up with a little bit of a superhighway situation, which already does happen. Because you guys do a great job patrolling the area on ninety-seven-year Richdale, but then you'll just see some traffic move onto our street if they see your marked cruiser. So kind of creates another situation for us as well. And my children are out biking on the street and whatnot. And so we're always very concerned about the speed and we'd really appreciate if we could lower the speed limit on this road as well in line with the surrounding roads because it is a cut-thrift.
Right. No, I appreciate that and I agree. It definitely is. I mean, we can look into some additional signage as well. Some of them candidly have teeth, some don't, but they never hurt relative to something to the effect of, you know, no through traffic. If it's, there is, it is against the law to avoid a traffic control device. So if you see a vehicle, you know, say, cut through a parking lot to avoid an intersection, you know, if somebody was stuck, for example, at Winfrey's, if they're stuck at that light and they don't want to wait and they just want to bang a right onto Maple, then it's, you can't do that. But in this case, I don't, I don't think it really fits that. But it definitely, I agree with the fact that especially at a high-peak traffic times where that would be, that would be a concern. We can actually certainly get some more enforcement down there as well to make sure officers, are there certain times of the day that you're noticing it, sir?
It tends to be around commuting time and then kind of middle of the day on weekends as well. Kind of like peak children activity times is when we notice it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I think David, uh, three of us already are leaning towards the townwide lowering.
Yes.
Limit across the board, so. Exactly where you're headed in that direction.
Yeah, uh, thank you all. I have no further comments, but appreciate, um, you know, just the thoughtfulness around this. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you. So are we? What's the goal tonight? Are we, would we vote next time? Steve?
Yeah, why don't we let um. Um, Kevin, uh, rewrite. This memo for what we discussed, and then we can do it next, next meeting.
All right, so just so I I make sure I'm I'm on the same page. Uh, twenty-five. Uh, school zones twenty? Is that?
Yep.
You want to agree, okay. Um, yeah, I will write that up. I will submit that to uh. To Steve and um I can't thank you enough for your support and. Uh, always supporting the the police department. It's uh super appreciative. So I will get that done and uh absolutely submit it.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you so much. Thank you, I'll pass it on, absolutely.
Thanks, you. Michelle.
The next B is, uh, this is an opportunity for the Select Board to discuss. Um, the June ninth special town meeting warrant. We have not opened the warrant, so this won't be uh for the official inclusion, but. You know, there are a number of article requests here, and I figured. You would need the time to discuss it and kind of walk through them. As as for timing. You have, um. Assuming the date for the special town meeting holds at June nine. We would have to post the warrant. Two weeks prior to that, so that would be essentially Friday, the twenty-third of May. Would be the absolute drop dead date. Uh, keeping in mind that if we were going to mail it to the residents and try to get them in there. I wasn't, you know, this can be also another question for the board if. Historically, Wenham, at least for the annual town meeting, tries to get a physical warrant into everybody's mailbox about two weeks ahead of time. If we were to open and close the warrant. On Tuesday, the sixth, which is our next meeting. We uh is the high likelihood we could get that out about a week to a week and a half. Um, in folks' mailbox, if. You know, if you don't, you know, if if that is something that you're not looking to explore due to the special town meeting or the short nature of the warrant. Then, um, you know, the, you could continue your discussion on to the twentieth. So just so you know that the timely, the timeline and and the restraints. And before you, uh, on the screen, if Michelle, you can scroll down a little. The summary of the annual town meeting, and these are. The twelve, scroll up a little bit, uh, the the twelve. Items that have been requested for the special town meeting. I remind the board that they did. Uh, intend to keep this warrant light. Originally, it was opened or the the date was set for. Three A, um, and you know, the idea was to keep that as a separate item, however. Uh, the board didn't want to discuss the possibility of adding some additional items to that warrant. Sure, if anyone has any questions or discussion points they want to start with, you've seen most of these before we went through them. During the uh warrant planning for the annual town meeting.
Yeah, so I'll just make a point here. I think we do need to do one. Two. And four. Those are all, each each of those positions are created under Mass General Law.
Think we need to just talk about it, but I I guess an overall point is I am concerned about. The length of the special town meeting, we're doing an evening session. With at least one, if not two, um. Potentially very controversial items, so I think we need to be conscious of not allowing this to get so long. That we're going to be there for hours on end.
Deirdre, it's my my thought, this is not going to be a big, these three things are not going to be a big deal. This should be like bang, bang, bang.
Maybe, but I guess I I would like to hear more about why. These three positions specifically should get stipends and not across the board.
Because each one of these are created by a Mass General Law. See what it says on local acceptance of Mass General Law?
Yes, I can read it. That's not the question, though.
But there are, there aren't Mass General Laws for other positions.
It's still additional compensation.
What's wrong with that?
I'm questioning the fairness. So I'm raising that as a question.
Well, if you'd like to go back and and get the legislature to change Mass General Law forty-one, section nineteen K. Then go ahead.
Peter? No, I'm not looking to do that, but there's no requirement that every town accept these. I think it is a point of discussion and a question to ask.
All right, I I'll let you guys talk about it. Ben?
So my perspective is that that we should. Um, any of the. Items that we think should be on the town, special town meeting warrant that aren't three A or potentially. Uh, the Cutler School should go at the end, because I do think people will show up. That evening, you know, ready to discuss the the bigger ticket items, and then some of these, I agree, are kind of. Probably quick discussion items, but I don't want to have too many quick discussion items at the front, front end that. Cuts into. You know, important time for people to debate the the one or two large issues. So looking at these, I think I I I don't have any problem with one through four. Being put on the warrant, um, and letting people decide that, although again, I think that should be at the end. To me, I think, I think five, we could, we could defer. I think that we could defer, um, nine. And I think eleven is a significant enough. Proposal demolition delay is, that's a, you know, that's an important topic. I don't, unless there's a really compelling reason that it be decided this year. I'm thinking that's something that'd be better suited for next annual town meeting. Um. And those are the ones that jumped out at me as not really needing to be. In the next town meeting. And then I think we also need to have a placeholder here for Spring Hill. Um. As well, so those are my feelings, so.
Karen?
I'm gonna echo Ben, um, and taking a look at the articles, I think one through seven, um, are are pretty. Self, um, self-sufficient. I think. From learning anything from the town meeting from two weeks ago, people's main focus are going to be on the larger topics and that Peter. Uh, I do believe that you're right. I think that we're going to be able to fly through some of the other um smaller items that. May not always have gotten the attention at the other town meeting, but if we put them ahead of the three A or potentially the school and other things, we'll be able to. Move along pretty quickly.
I totally agree. I think Ben's spot on, move move after a three A and and elementary school.
But I like one through seven. I'm not opposed to eight through twelve, but um. I I think that one through seven is pretty. It should be on the list.
Gary?
I'm looking as. Ben said about Spring Hill, then I think if that goes on, then uh we should get number ten in. As uh the uh party there came to the uh Select Board earlier. And we're essentially holding up their whole construction if they can't purchase that property. And then twelve, I think, aren't we uh having a vacancy right now because of the uh. Lack of a representative from the uh. Wenham, Hamilton Wenham Rec Department or the Committee? Is that right, Steve?
Oh, sorry, I was muted. Um, yeah, that that's correct, Gary. Basically. The way it was presented to me that the CPC was originally created before we had, um. The Wenham Open Space Committee, and uh so they went to the the Joint Committee. And now that we have a dedicated committee that fits. The box, so to speak, and plus, we have an extremely hard time finding anybody interested. In participating on that uh on the rec committee. Uh, this, the CPC brought this uh or is bringing this request forward.
So. I would like to see that vacancy filled with that little switch, and I don't. I'm not sure that any of these are going to take up all that much time, but I'd go with Ben that. Let's get the big three A question out of the way first, and then just work through the others here.
Michelle, can you just scroll up a little bit so we can see the articles that are included, so we don't have, there you go.
That's from the annual town.
Yep. So I don't, so where is three A on here? And it's the.
Three, three A is the, is is just assumed as a constant.
Okay, is there a way just for?
Yeah, scroll down, it should be Spring Hill, do we? Spring, oh, sorry, there should be Spring Hill, um, it has, is requested to be on. As well. So as you know, the Planning Board had a hearing last week. Uh, I sent out their memo. To the Select Board with favorable. Uh, action to, for the Select Board to place the. Spring Hill sub, the ways within the Spring Hill subdivision to be accepted as public ways. Uh, with, you know, with with the caveat that uh the Select Board sort through. The, uh, actually, Michelle, you have that memo up. Uh, if you could pull that memo up, Select Board uh sort through the operation and maintenance plan. Um. And uh. Make sure that all the necessary easements that we're working through are accepted by the town. The the high, high level. View is, is that uh really there's two, two outstanding uh items. And one being the easement, there is an obstruction, however. We have, um, Rich and I have visited the site, and Rich believes that. The all, there, the homeowners have proposed an alternate location for the easements. And um, Rich believes that he can access what he needs to access through that easement. Uh, with some, you know, creating a ramp and whatnot with stone and a leaned or a um. A uh, you know, something would be filed with with the mortgage uh at the Registry of Deeds that. Holds the town harmless for any damage that's done and all repairs to get it back to the original. Condition would be on the homeowner, and this would survive through, you know, any future homeownerships. And then additionally, now the operation and maintenance plan. I believe the uh, the Planning Board recommends that the Select Board, um. Accept the way with the homeowners association maintaining the obligations to maintain the uh. The stormwater system within the sub development and that. Um. The, my most recent conversation with Shereen, one of our town councils. Is they are working on with uh Rob Ansel, who who is uh. Who's here tonight with his hand raised, I'm sure he wants to to speak, is um. That they, any, any, I guess, insurance interpretation that, you know, to accept the public waves. Would ultimately, you know, if. Disaster struck or it wasn't maintained for whatever reason in the, in in the far future. That the town would ultimately assume responsibility for maintenance of the system because they have to keep. Uh, the way open and safe for travel by both the public and public safety. Um, what we're proposing now for. You know, the residents are proposing and uh insurance working with them to draft it is an agreement that places the responsibility. Of maintaining these systems on the residents of Spring Hill. Now, and in the event that the town does have to step in to. Um, do any maintenance or improvements to these systems to uh maintain their integrity. That the uh, the town would be reimbursed uh for any, any expenses incurred. By the homeowners association, if the homeowners association was unable to reimburse, that uh they would be uh leans would. The town would be able to place leans on their homes to recover any costs. Um. And again, Rob, Rob, their attorney is here, uh, Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if you want to allow him to speak, you just have his hand up.
Are we, are we supposed to decide on this tonight?
No, no, you don't.
Then, so then, um, let's not.
Well, I mean, I think that, you know, you probably might want to have a partial discussion, uh. If you have any questions, right, because, you know, we can, we can come back to you next time with answers. This is just out of the the Planning Board's meeting.
Does anybody, does anybody have any questions?
I think it would be helpful to hear from Robert Anso.
Question from Gary, under the terms, would this be characterized as a betterment? In case we needed to uh get reimbursed on the town side?
Um, that I don't know the answer to, uh, based on my discussion with Shereen, it would be similar to a tax lien. So, you know, you might not recover the costs immediately, but. In the event they uh, an ownership is, you know, changed or. Um, and you know, if the town's leans are are first up to be, to me, to be made, made whole.
Because I'm just looking at uh betterment, what requires eighty or eighty-five percent of the parties, but I think in this case, we really need. All hundred percent of the parties signed on to this agreement.
Yeah, and that's what uh Mr. Ansel is working on now, is getting all parties to sign off on that.
Dave, are we still talking on the um, on the agenda for the ninth meeting? Did we just go right into this?
Well, we went into this because this is an item that needed some backstory. That's, you just, this, a lot of this information developed in the last. Two or three business days.
So this will be number?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, and then just to clarify, three A will be one. Or what, whatever number we're giving it at some point, but it is on the list.
Yes, yeah, three, three is like, I think, at least in my. Uh, interpretation of discussions is is basically the reason why we're having it, so that's, that's a given.
It's totally fine, it just wasn't on the list, so I just.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
The reason for the meeting and the school consolidation potentially?
So I just have a, I have a question about one of the other ones, and I I I'm not saying that we're necessarily. From my perspective, done on the Spring Hill discussion, because I know that Attorney Ansel has his hand up, but just um, as we're sort of. Maybe reaching consensus on which of the ones on this list of twelve would drop, drop off potentially. Um, number eight, uh, the Finance and Advisory Committee Appointment. Process and changing it, is that? Something that has some urgency to it in anybody's eyes or? Or could it wait?
Uh, Ro- Roger, our town moderator is. Here, yeah, and that's the, he's the chair of the committee that requested that. He could. Probably weigh in if he's available to speak on the, on his sense of urgency.
Sorry, good evening, took me a minute to uh. Get along, good, good evening, uh, Mr. Chair.
get along. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So I think that the, so the, the proposed amendment to the Appointment Bylaw, sorry, again, Roger Smirage, seven on Indian River Road, Town Moderator. The proposed amendment here brought by the Finance and Advisory Appointing Committee would include, would add a provision to the Appointing Bylaw that covers the situation if the sitting chair, who is a member of the Appointing Committee, is up for reappointment. In other words, if the person who is the sitting chair and is ordinarily a member of the committee is up for reappointment and thus would have to either recuse him or herself or present a conflict. The Assistant Chair or Vice Chair of the Finance Committee would step on to the Appointing Committee in their place to avoid the conflict and also avoid the situation where you would otherwise have a potential for a one-one tie vote. The urgency of this was actually something that presented itself before and affects the current appointment cycle, which is something we're gonna be doing the next couple of months, so the opportunity has kind of come and gone to, to get this changed for the current appointment where the current chair of the FinCom is still in their first term and would be potentially voting or having to recuse. So in terms of the June Special Town Meeting, I don't think this is of pressing import at this point. It's more of housekeeping that should be attended to at some point in the future at this point. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
So if I may, I think just in, in the, I appreciate Moderator Smirage giving that assessment and background. You know, if we, if we do want to streamline some of the non-core issues and the core issues, again, I think it's clearly three A and potentially Cutler School. That, in my mind, anyway, five, eight, nine, and eleven would be ones that could could drop off.
Well, I'll speak to nine. Which was my request, and I guess I feel it's as urgent or not urgent as many of the others that have been suggested to stay on the agenda. I actually think it's important, it's, and to be clear, it's not limiting participation on all boards and committees to people being on one across all boards and committees, it's specific to policymaking boards. Which I think we would need to discuss the list, but it's about Select Board, Planning Board, some of the elected boards potentially, Board of Health, assessors, water. The ones that are elected and that are creating policy. And I think it's important because I think it is problematic for people to be on multiple boards pushing single agendas and voting multiple times on same or similar items from different boards. I think it's part of the principles reducing conflicts of interest, separation of powers. And those ideas that if you're on a policymaking board, that is your focus and that's who you represent. So I feel, again, it's as urgent or not urgent as many of the others on this list. But I think that a lot of the people who are present this evening are looking to hear that three A is on the warrant, that the school consolidation, that we are considering placing that on the warrant, at least, and that Spring Hill will be on the warrant. That's my guess.
Gary? I'm sorry.
Clarity on those.
Gary, you have something to say?
Yes, I was just gonna speak. Number eleven, I think could take a while because certainly it's an important one, but I think that it might be people have definite pros and cons feeling, so I think that has the potential of confusing three A and/or taking up a lot of time. Then on let me see, number seven, I'd ask Steve, do we have any kind of dollar figures on that able to get?
I mean, we don't, we don't have doll, dollar figures, but I, I can certainly pull that together, it would range from you know, anyways, from one, one day pay to thirty days.
Right.
Pay.
Next meeting, whenever we're gonna go for this?
Yep. Oh, the, oh, actually, the, oh, number seven, so that's that's leftover, but that, I believe, has been remedied to the satisfaction of the board with the recent union settlement. So we opted to go to a a lesser amount than what is allowed on chapter, chapter thirty-three, section fifty-nine, which is basically unlimited. And we were able to negotiate putting a cap at thirty, I think it was thirty days or thirty-two days. And the board was looking at potentially exploring that into its personnel bylaw to apply to the entire organization.
Cause I think you just, as you said, we need to make sure it's not just in one contract, but applies to all employees across the board.
Yep. And the Select Board, if that's what you're looking, if it's not the adoption of the chapter thirty-three, section fifty-nine, the Select Board actually has the authority to do that without town meeting vote, they can amend the personnel bylaws themselves with a, with a public hearing. So that doesn't have to be on there unless you want, unless you're looking to adopt that, that specific section.
I think the public hearing and the Select Board action probably easier and less confusing.
I know you can remove ten, I mean, we're not, the request is still there, but we're really not in a position to to finalize it, given the timeline that we have.
Is that the one on Pleasant Pond?
Yes.
So as of now, what are we removing? I think everyone's kind of said one through seven works and then eight through eleven we're questioning.
I'm through. I mean, do we want to just go through one by one and take a vote?
We can, that might be helpful.
With a couple of caveats, I guess if the main three articles are first, then I'm okay with many of these being on, but as I said, I think there are, none of these are really more urgent than the other, in my opinion.
I just have one, one follow-up, Deirdre, with respect to number nine. I mean, one concern I have with that is just to take an example of two policymaking boards, the Concom and the Water Commissioners, like I wouldn't want to preclude, you know, a highly qualified person, like a hydrologist or something, from serving on both those boards, given that it's difficult to fill a lot of these positions, although I, 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 we all are probably surprised to see that the, the only hotly contested elected positions on the ballot last week were the two Water Commissioner slots. And when I served on that commission, it was not as scintillating, I guess, as it is now, but anyway. So, so I, I don't know whether, and I, and forgive me, because I think that you had drafted something in the past that's, you know, that expands upon what's here in the summary on number nine, but would you anticipate that before we, before this would go on the warrant that there'd be more definition as to exactly which boards we're talking about? Cause like, like I said, I think there are certain boards where we wouldn't want to limit one person's ability to serve on multiple policymaking boards.
Yes, and I guess maybe that's not the right term, but I, you know, maybe it's elected boards. Yeah, I think that definitely needs more definition. You know, it's already in the bylaws restricting FinCom, so I think along those same lines, that sort of primary boards are the ones that I would include, but yes, it needs to be discussed. And I would include School Committee, though I don't know that we have the ability to do that.
I, I might be wrong, but is there, if somebody is an elected official, do we have the authorization to not allow them to serve on a rule? I mean, if they are truly elected by the town members, I mean, is, is that legal?
I think we had this checked, Steve, is that right?
Yeah, we'll get KP's opinion, man, that does look like some communities have something similar restricting, but we'll, KP, when they drop the warrants, will give us the final of articles, excuse me.
Yeah, the example I found was Stonem. The language that I had pulled.
Mr. Chair, would you entertain a, a motion on this?
I would.
So I'll move that on a preliminary basis, the Select Board include the following potential articles on the Special Town Meeting warrant. And those would be three A. Potentially a Cutler School expansion revote if, if requested by the School Committee. Numbers one through five, I'm sorry, numbers one through six. Well, I, I think the consensus seemed to be to, to do the dog registration one, and then I think six was consensus item. So I was gonna, the motion I was gonna make was one through six on this, on the list that's been provided to us. As well as nine, ten, twelve, and a vote on street acceptance for Spring Hill.
Except not ten, because we're not ready, Steve said.
Okay, I thought that, I thought Gary, you had mentioned ten as being something that was holding up a project.
Well, I just see it as the same as Spring Hill, that the town is doing something for particular property owners. And just fairness, but as Steve said, if, if the the folks don't have the paperwork ready, then.
Well, is that the, is that the people, I'm not sure we can be ready.
Right.
In time, the, the request is there and likely won't go away, but with the, it's a tax title property and that could be a lengthy process, I'm not sure.
Right.
Even if we have to go ahead right now. Well, if that's, if that's, if it's something the board wants to consider, I can certainly have a timeline. You know, if it looks like we can make it, we'll start working on it tomorrow, but if not, I'll, I'll propose a timeline to you next time. And we can put a plan in place.
And I'm sorry, did we, I realize we're in the middle of motion, but did we, did we decide that seven is no longer necessary because of the collective bargaining agreement?
That's correct. And the, the board wants to expand that to non, all union members and non-union members. Which they.
Gary, you? So yeah, as I said, I just use the bylaw process.
Okay. All right, so, so I'm gonna withdraw the partial motion I made just for the benefit of the, of Ms. Tinsley in the minutes, so I move that on a preliminary basis, the Select Board include the following potential articles for the Special Town Meeting, number one, three A, number two, Cutler School Expansion if requested by the School Committee. Next on the list, and in this order, would be numbers one through six on the list provided to us, and then followed by number numbers nine and twelve on the list. As well as potential street acceptance for Spring Hill.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, let's ready to vote.
Wait, hold on, I'd like to get more information on nine from a legal standpoint before we put it on the, on the warrant. I want to make sure that that's.
Warrant's not open yet. So it's a preliminary list.
But to vote for nine, I'd like a little bit more information from the lawyers to make sure that that's that's allowed and legal.
Fair point, but I think procedurally, like this, I made the motion, it's been seconded, so I think we, I think we just have to vote on that motion at the, at this point.
Okay, Peter votes yes.
Deirdre, yes.
Ben, yes.
Gary, yes.
Karen, yes.
And to Karen's point, we're gonna have to take another vote on this anyhow after the warrant's open, right?
Yes. Robert Ansel still has his hand raised, Peter.
Go ahead.
Uh, go ahead, Robert.
Are you gonna circle back to Spring Hill? Or is it gonna be included on the warrant?
We just included it.
Okay, that was about a vote.
Yeah.
And
the preliminary list, so the warrant will be open next time officially.
Is there anything more that are, we need to do before the Board of Selectmen?
It's Select Board just for.
Select Board.
Sorry. I don't think so.
Okay.
I mean, we do need to have that, we're gonna continue to get that, those liens in place, right, that would.
Correct. I, I've been in consistent contact with Sharon.
Yes, I think that, that's the assumption is that in an agreement like that will be in place to recover costs.
Yes. We're working out those details.
Okay, cool, thank you.
I, and I'm really sorry that I just said Selectmen, I, I've been a Select Board advocate in numerous communities for a long time, so I'm sorry I said that.
That's okay.
Thank you for your apology.
Okay, so I, I guess I'm out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to put up an article that says that they no longer can say Selectmen?
I think we did that already. Just to clarify before we move on for the school consolidation, so the next steps would be to invited, be asked to do so by the School Committee, is that what I heard?
Yeah, they're voting tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further debrief on last Saturday's town meeting? Review?
Yeah, there is the, a little bit of confusion at the beginning with families being turned away from the cafeteria and told that they had to attend the family room, but there were locked out of the family room because it was overpopulated. And so we had a few families that were a little frustrated because they were asked to leave the cafeteria area. So I do have a list of those names and I'm more than happy to send those over to, to Roger, he can take a look at that, but that was a, a small issue.
Like Roger's hand is raised.
Roger, do you have something to add?
Roger, do you have something to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um so uh uh as the town moderator, again Roger Smear, seven on your River Road. Um, it it saddens me to hear uh that anyone was uh either turned away or or um given the impression that they were being turned away. I would note that that would be an issue that would be raised with the town clerk's office as the um department that handles the check-in process, the moderator is not uh responsible for the check-in process, but I think it's been clear during my my tenure that everyone who is a registered voter in this town is welcome to town meeting um and should certainly uh be given every opportunity to uh exercise their their rights as a voter at town meeting. Um, so that does sadden me to hear that either there was, I suspect, some miscommunication, but that that impression was given to anyone. Uh I'm hopeful that those uh voters were able to um find a spot in the cafeteria or in the gymnasium a- and participate uh notwithstanding whatever may have happened during the check-in process.
They were not. They had to leave. But I will certainly send that over to Diane.
Yeah, and let let me just, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Diane, also.
Go ahead, Roger.
Uh, my policy is that voters do not need to be in any special room to have kids with them at town meeting. Uh, we have had on plenty of occasions, children with parents uh in town meeting, whether it's in the gymnasium or elsewhere, uh and it's not a problem. Um, I know on Saturday, there was a moment when the volume uh in the cafeteria became an issue. Uh, and, you know, I made an announcement and just asked folks who were in there to be uh you know, respectful of uh their fellow voters and the need to hear what was going on, and I did not hear anything further about that after I made the announcement, sounds from everything that I heard from my assistant moderator and other folks in the cafeteria uh that uh everything went pretty smoothly in there um. Uh, and there were no issues of um of note, so that's definitely something that is disconcerting to me as the moderator. Uh, I hope that that issue uh can be brought to the town clerk uh a- and raised and addressed. Um, I do think that there was some confusion uh by some of the election officers as to what the uh kindergarten room, family room, whatever whatever label you want to put on it. Um, what it was for. Um, so it's un- unfortunate to hear that it had the effect of some people believing that they were not uh allowed into town meeting. That should not happen under any circumstances.
Mr. Chair, uh Diane Buco has her and Andreas.
And sorry, someone is not muted, if they can please mute. Thank you.
Go ahead, Diane.
So I will take a deep breath. This is Diane Buco, seventy-three Topsail Road, York Town Clerk. There was no one at check-in that was turned away. The check-in officials were aware that there were thirty signed up residents reserving the family room. If they were not signed up, we told them to go to the overflow room, which was the cafeteria. After that, I heard nothing. So if people were turned away, it was not due to any election officer duty at all. I'd also like to say that children, of course, are all welcome. Every town clerk in the world would want absolutely everybody to attend any election event. I would say that I don't think that we need a so-called family room because children are are invited at any time. And if we have an overflow room as well, they could go in there as well. I do think that there was a little bit more angst with the three separate rooms. Um, and maybe it wasn't exactly clear to absolutely everybody who was um working the event. So I do apologize for anybody who felt that they needed to leave the meeting without without voting, but everybody who came in to participate was allowed to come in either as a voter or as non-voter. As you look forward to a special town meeting that will be hopefully as well attended, I would recommend that we try to limit the amount of rooms primarily because the clickers had a lag because there were so many clickers and two receivers. So if we limit the rooms, I think that the clickers would work better and there might be less worry among the residents. Other than that, I want to say that it was a very large town meeting, an annual town meeting, it was unbelievable to see all those people come out. I think it was extremely well run, I think our moderator held everything right to point, we got through the business in an amazing amount of time. I want to thank everybody for what we did, and I'm looking forward to future town meetings with just as many people for whatever business that comes before us. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Mr. Chairman, uh the moderator has his hand up. Sir, would you like to speak?
Y- yes, just briefly, two more points. Um, first of all, and thank you, uh Diane, for um your comments. I certainly, uh I apologize if I came off as sounding as though I was stating that any of Diane's staff uh turned anyone away. All I was saying was that if there was an issue at check-in, that would be something to be brought to the clerk's attention, not the moderator's attention. I did not hear of that happening, and I thought Diane's staff did a fantastic job on Saturday, given the what we believe to be a record turnout. Um, so kudos to to everyone that Diane had working on Saturday. Um, I I I'm hopeful that uh no one was actual turn actually turned away, and if uh someone felt that they had to leave, it was an unfortunate miscommunication um rather than uh, you know, an actual uh actual incident. Um, with respect to the family room, uh I I do share some of Diane's um feelings uh about it. Conceptually, I think it is a great idea. We had, I believe, six voters in that room out of the thirty people um that could be in there with code capacity, and that includes um my uh uh the assistant moderator that I appointed. Um, I certainly know that, you know, there were a a large number of children in there, and that was the purpose of it. Um, but Diane's absolutely right that having to use the second transmitter uh created a a pretty significant lag um on the votes being tallied by the computer system. Uh, it also created a a bit of an issue that we had to spend about ten minutes at the outset of town meeting working out to make sure those uh clickers were actually uh people were seeing their their vote during the test run. Um, so I I think conceptually, it's something that should still be on the table going forward, but maybe there needs to be a different way of um handling that so that uh perhaps the cafeteria can be made a even more family-friendly space than it already is. Um, so that we only need the two rooms um uh and can fit as many people as possible um within that that space from a logistics standpoint. Um, it it would certainly um streamline things from a logistics standpoint uh both between the technology, but also in the event that we have to switch to voter cards. It's a lot easier for me to confer with a single other assistant moderator on what the, you know, the a's and nays would be with voter cards than it would be with three rooms. Um, so, you you know, I I I think it's, it was a great experiment, and I think it's something that should be considered further. Um, but I think uh to Diane's point, there were some uh, you know, some issues uh along with the good. Um, so that's just my you know, my uh reality sort of check on it while again, saying that I think everything we can do to ma- get as many voters into town meeting um it are things that we should be doing as a town.
Karen, do you have something to say?
Yeah, I was just gonna reiterate that I we thought it was really successful, my daughter was in it, my husband was in it, um the family room. And that, um, just to remind everyone, this was a a test launch, um we'd never done this before, and so it was something that we knew that we were gonna have some kinks in the armor a little bit, we were gonna have to figure out some of the process, so um for any meeting moving forward, I'm in full support of this. Um, my only quick question regarding um, you know, having the numbers, how many people were in the cafeteria? So we had six voting adults um that ended up being in the children's room, but we had fifteen to seventeen children at one point. And so, you know, because they were also counted as people, um that was over thirty-something people in that room. Um, so my question is, is how many people were in the cafeteria?
Diane, do you have an answer for that?
Am I still on?
Yeah.
Yes, um, you know what, I don't know, because we didn't I don't know if Roger knows, I don't, we just kept a track of how many people in totality and the election officers in the family room had a strict limit to thirty persons regardless of age. So I don't know if that that the cafeteria was full or not.
For you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Rod, Roger.
I believe the cafeteria was full. Um, we had, I think it was a hundred sixty or so seats um in there, but um I I'm to understand through my assistant moderator, who was in charge of that room, as and others, people were standing in the cafeteria just as they were in the gymnasium and and sitting along the edges of the rooms. Um, one thing that I would say is that if there's a way of getting the cafeteria tables out of the cafeteria um and whether it's into the hallway or or somewhere else, we could certainly fit more folding chairs in the cafeteria. Um, but we lost a pretty significant amount of room on on the sides of the cafeteria because the tables were folded up and and taking up the floor space. Um, yeah, I I I don't think we're gonna get almost six hundred registered voters at another town me- I mean, if if we have the school consolidation and and three A at the same time at a special town meeting, I guess it's possible. Um, but but it was a record turnout, but yeah, I believe there were uh probably a good close to probably two hundred people in the cafeteria would be my guess.
Deirdre, you have a point?
I do. So I would like to say first and foremost, thank you to the town for showing up, as has been noted, in record numbers. I think it was an amazing turnout and a wonderful thing to see everyone come to town meeting and come together to discuss and vote and make their voices heard. I want to say thank you to the staff for organizing and producing uh an incredibly successful town meeting. I want to thank Roger as our moderator for doing a fantastic job. Diane at the town clerk's office and all of the volunteers, I think, did a wonderful job, everyone that I saw was smiling and friendly and helpful. And I thought they were fantastic at getting everyone in. I want to thank the FinCom for all the work that they did preparing for this town meeting. And I also want to say congratulations to Ben and Peter on their reelections. David Anderson getting reelected to the planning board. And I think I'm missing one, there's a library trustee on the ballot also. And also, as was noted earlier, I think a historic contestant election for two seats on the water commission, I think that's amazing to see. Congratulations to Ernest for being reelected and Colby Stoddard uh to being elected to the water commission, and I think that that's an incredible sign of the engagement of the people in this town and how people are stepping up to take part in local government, and I appreciate it, and it's incredible to see. And I encourage everyone to keep looking at those openings. And join all, join the rest of us, join the party.
Anne?
Um, Mr. Chair, under under item C here where it says debriefing on the town meeting and discussion of action items moving forward. Um, I I do have some thoughts about action items moving forward with respect to the Cutler School, and I don't know whether you anticipated that that would be um discussed this evening.
I don't think we were gonna discuss it this evening. But.
We we voted to um we voted to poten- to include it on the special town meeting warrant if the school committee recommends that. Um, so I realize we've done that already, um but I defer to the chair as far as whether we're entertaining uh additional thoughts on um Cutler School consolidation on the special town meeting.
Well, I think it all starts with the school committee. And whether they vote tomorrow to try and get this uh back on the ballot back in the town meeting.
I think there's a um just if I if I may, just on sort of a related point to that. Um, so, and and before I say thank you, Deirdre, for your comments, I I totally agree with all of the um accolades that you gave about everyone involved in in what was a historically well-attended town meeting. Um, so something like sixty-three percent of Wenham voters voted in favor of the Cutler School expansion project at our town meeting, which, as we know, fell short of the two-thirds uh threshold that is in the current uh regional agreement, and then something like fifty-nine percent of Wenham voters last Thursday supported the project. So I think it raises a a an interesting question as to whether um when you have strong majorities of voters in our town who support something like this project, whether um their voices should be um uh overcome by the two-thirds threshold in the regional agreement. The regional agreement does have a provision in it for amendment. And it's pretty a pretty straightforward situation where the school committee can propose an amendment to the regional agreement and then forward that along to the two town select boards. And the the two-thirds provision in question, which is Article nine, Authorization of Debt under the district agreement that has this two-thirds threshold um cites to the state statute that um covers authorization of debt for regional school committees, Mass General Law's chapter seventy-one. Section section sixteen D. And that state law does not require a two-thirds threshold for authorization of debt. It requires only a majority vote, which in my mind is more appropriate for a situation like this. And I would like to urge the um the school committee to consider seeking to amend section nine to align it with state law and make the threshold for approval a majority vote rather than a two-thirds vote. And that would be something that logistically could be achieved if the school committee agrees and the select boards agree um in time for a potential revote on the Cutler School. It would be a transparent process where the town meeting voters would would vote on that question first. And if majority of town meeting voters in both towns believe that the Cutler School question should be decided on a majority vote rather than a supermajority two-thirds that allows thirty-three percent plus one person to block something that a majority might want, then that can be voted on, and if it's approved, it would change the threshold for approval on the Cutler School. So um, those are things that I I I think are reasonable and should be. So, um, those are things that I, I, I think are reasonable and should be put to. The voters, but to your point, Mister Chair, the ball is in the school committee's court at the moment.
Yeah, but I love your idea. Um, Gary, you want to say something?
Yeah, just cut points. Yes, I would certainly uh, support Ben's proposal there. And also echo Deidre's uh, thanks. I hope everyone understands how much work goes on behind the. Scenes to get a town meeting done. Last main point is though. If we have the meeting on the ninth, we're planning a warrant hearing on the previous Monday, the second. And is that gonna have an opportunity for the select board or a. A planning board or even the school committee to come in and present factual uh. Information more online of a form rather than just a, a quick review of the particular warrant articles. So, that last was a, a question that uh, I see a need for. The warrant hearing to be a little bit expanded and either. Uh, pre-approved briefings that the select board and others can view. From the town staff or the uh, school committee if that comes about as a, a proposal as well. Because I don't think uh, all the numbers on the three A are out there either.
Yeah, we can certainly put that together, Gary. Uh, I, I anticipate a pretty robust commentary. Around three A uh, in, in the warrant. I know, uh, we're working on a fiscal impact study that. Will be ready in time. Having that public hearing next week. And, you know, we'll certainly build out. A lot of information that'll be able to be um, distributed to the community. Thank you.
Okay, so we. Do we think we've completed the debrief? Pretty good discussion.
Mister Chairman, we do have a hand up in the audience, just, just so you know, I just wanted to uh, alert you.
Go ahead.
Uh, Peter Fisher, go ahead, please. Hello, Peter Fisher, you can speak if you'd like. He's not speaking, so I assume.
Going once, going twice. Alright, so we're gonna move on from C. Old business items for individual consideration. These items will allow for public comment, ten minutes. Purpose, this comment period will allow for public comment or. On individual and will be held before or after the board's discussion of the agenda item at the discretion of. You got the, of the chair. Rules, two minutes per person. A person may speak only once, ten minutes total per item unless noted on the agenda item.
No old business. So, I mean, so you can move.
Okay.
No new business, you can move to old business, sorry.
Old business items for individual consideration, no, oh, I'm sorry, D, other matters. As may have not been anticipated by the chair, discussion only.
Nope, just can we confirm our next meeting date? That May sixth?
May sixth.
I brought up with Steve today, um, is there a way that we could take a look at the schedule real quick for um. June. Up to June, I know that as a group, we are looking to set goals and some expectations, but. As far as um, schedules and summer activities, it would be great to just throw out some ideas. If possible.
Maybe Fridays, they'll work better for. Folks than others. Like historically, we've done a Friday morning.
Wait, Friday morning, what are we talking about? The workshop?
Yeah, I think just getting, uh, getting something on the books before everybody gets too busy. With summer plans, um, just so we have a time to at least start the discussions. Thirteenth.
May thirteenth?
No, June.
May thirteenth is, is that the last day of school? No.
No, June thirteenth, Friday the thirteenth.
I'm available June thirteenth if, um, let me just still check that um. Yeah, Friday, June thirteenth is open for me if that's, if we're talking about holding a. An annual select board workshop on goals that morning that would work for me.
Me too.
Likewise, should be a good date. We'll know uh, the results of the special town meeting by then too.
We won't know the results of the Hamilton. Town meeting because there's this June twenty-second. If that would affect any of our plans or consolidated efforts, we won't know that by then. If that matters. If not, June thirteenth does work for me. And we're talking like eight to twelve?
It works for me, whatever you guys want to do. As long as Peter brings coffee.
I can do that.
I'm just kidding. But you can.
Alright, are we done?
Do we need to have this after Hamilton or do we, can we do it before?
Yep, sorry, Gary.
Now, just saying, everything except the school is uh. Will be pertinent for the thirteenth, so.
And if you remember last year, this discussion carried on over several meetings, so I think. There'll probably be enough to talk about, I mean, I'll. I'll be able to, you know, at a minimum, give an update on where we stand with last year's and we can, you know, talk about what's gonna be continued on to. The new fiscal year, any new objectives that are on folks' minds and, you know, just start. You know, laying the groundwork. We're putting together. A goals and objectives sheet.
Sounds good to me. I'm putting it in my calendar, eight to twelve. Friday the thirteenth, which. I put it that way, maybe we don't want.
Looks like bad luck.
And regular select board meetings, the third and seventeen?
Yeah, that's what I have and it works good because then it goes right to the first meeting in uh. Oh, actually, no, July, fourth of July. I always forget about the fourth of July. Oh no, we're good because July one's a uh.
Tuesday.
A Tuesday, so that'll work.
I'm not here that week, but you can. Be without me.
Alright, we ready for a motion?
Can we just backtrack? So if the meeting is going to be on June ninth, we have to have the warrant open on the second? Or the, the meeting on the second to? Is that right? Yeah, so that doesn't have to be seven days before? So we have meeting on the second, the third, the ninth, and the seventeenth? And the thirteenth?
Yes.
Okay. And then May sixth and the twentieth, are there any other days that are needed?
As far as the special time meeting?
Yep.
The, the posting date. Is the. Twenty-third. That's the absolute drop dead date to get this posted.
Do we need a meeting that day or no?
What's that?
Do we need a meeting that day?
No, we don't. I'm just, I'm just giving you guys an idea. And I think. We were looking to open and close the warrant on the sixth. Of May.
Can you open and close it in the same meeting?
Yeah, it looks like. We're going to do that um. And then we'll post it on the twenty-third. I mean, excuse me, then we'll post it that like the day after. And then we'll still be able to get something in folks' mailbox, but if. Anything happens between now and then that delays it. Um, you know, we're gonna have to make a decision and it probably any later than closing it on the sixth. Probably wouldn't allow us to get. Warrants in people's mailbox. It would become uh, electronic distribution. Just so you're aware of that.
So just to recap, we have the sixth, the twentieth, June second, June third, June thirteenth, June seventeenth, July first.
That's it, yep.
See you guys more than I see my parents.
Move to adjourn at eight eighteen P M.
Second.
Ready to vote? Peter says yes.
Deirdre, yes?
Ben, yes.
Curious.
Adios amigos.